All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole, meeting for February 3rd, 2021, to order. So as we remember, February is Black History Month. If we could, during our moment of silence, remember all the wonderful African-American leaders and folks who passed during this last year, i.e. John Lewis, et cetera. So, moment of silence, please. Thank you. Alderman Doorman will be kind enough to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Doorman. Mr. Crupp, if you would please call the role city clerk.
Dunn.
Here.
Doorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp. Condon.
Here.
Peacock.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jobchin.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you, Brian. So, good evening again as we begin the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and everybody that's viewing on your mobile devices. Respectfully, welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind you're talking to the whole council and sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and viewers throughout our entire region. We're happy you're participating in the city, in our city government, and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire to make Davenport a greater place for everyone. If you have a phone, please put it on silent or turn it off so it doesn't get in the way of someone talking here. If you wish to address the council and you're in the chambers, please come to the podium. Please give your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're at, or where you're from, sorry. And we know you're here. We'll ask you to please be respectful. We'll be respectful of you. Thank you. Ms. Spiegel, our city administrator, update for this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm actually going to have Director Gleason give you a little kind of snow and ice and both a forecast ahead of what we're expecting in the next 24 hours, which is another challenging storm for Public Works. But I know she had shared a fairly lengthy email with you all a little earlier this evening about kind of how our snow response is going and some of the complaints that we're seeing consistently. So you have a little better information.
Glad to hear from Ms. Gleason and how she'll solve this one. But we are under a winter storm warning now, folks, for tomorrow, so be ready.
Yes. Solve is a very optimistic word, Mayor. So basically, as I mentioned in my email, we have received about 18 inches of snow since December 29th. And it has been extra challenging because of the ice component in that initial event in especially narrower roads where we see parked cars and a lot of trees. There hasn't been a good opportunity for sunlight to melt that ice. So we are seeing areas that are pocketed. So we are really trying to focus on ice cutting, the ones we can actually get to. Many of them, if there's too many cars or too narrow, we just, it's literally impossible for us to even fit the motor grader down the road to cut the ice. So we do continue to do those activities. We'll do that tomorrow morning up until the next round of snow arrives. The really big, challenging part of what will happen tomorrow is there's going to be a significant temperature drop as soon as the snow stops. And once we get below that 20-degree mark, the salt is basically ineffective. And we're expecting that below 20 degrees to happen for in excess of a week. So expect that the next week, we're going to continue to hear complaints. And some of those complaints, we literally just, we are not going to be able to do anything about it because the salt just won't work. So just bear with us, be patient, we will do our best. But you will be hearing from residents. We've taken in nearly 2,000 requests since that first event five weeks ago. So it's been a challenging couple of weeks, and we appreciate your support.
Thanks for that update. The wind and significant visibility issues are going to be a challenge tomorrow. So I just want to say on behalf of the council, we wish your folks the best and safety because you're the ones out there, just like our police are out doing things when we're sitting here. You guys, your folks are out there trying to take care of the roads when, especially tomorrow, the visibility and wind and all those issues will come into play. So please pass on our best wishes to your folks. So thank you, Ms. Gleason. Ms. Spiegel, anything else? Very good. Okay, so, next item. We have 10 public hearings this evening. Sometimes we have none, but today we have 10. We have two under community development and seven under Public Works, and then we have one in finance. So under community development, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee usually do that. But Alderwoman Lee, are you going to do that? So Alderwoman Lee, please.
Okay, thank you very much, Your Honor. Tonight, we have two public hearings under community development. The first public hearing is for case REZ 20-08, being the request of MCC Iowa LLC on behalf of MM Development LLC to rezone 5,000 Grand Avenue from our residential multifamily district to I-1 Light Industrial District to allow for construction of a communications building to house and operate electronics and fiber optic cables. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. A movement and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, this public hearing is closed. The second public hearing on the proposed conveyance of the vacated public right-of-way, known as a portion of the East-West Alley lying south of the 1,900 block of West 15th Street between Wilkes Avenue and Pacific Street with the city of Davenport as the partitioner. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? This hearing is closed. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Now we move to Public Works, where Alderman Dunn and Alderman Doorman will discuss these public hearings. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have seven public hearings this evening for Public Works. I open the first public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Harrison Street reconstruction, Northbrook Drive to 503 Harrison Street. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West 43rd Street reconstruction, Michigan to Elsie project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Sheffield Drive reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the fourth public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Heatherton Drive reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the fifth public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the East 38th Street reconstruction, Spring Street to Bell Avenue. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the public hearing number six on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West 53rd Street patching project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close this public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. And the seventh and final public hearing this evening for Public Works, I open the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the water pollution control plant, Graywater Conversion Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and that concludes it for today's evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. We have one more area, Finance, public hearing. Alderman Condon and Alderwoman Peacock will discuss this. Alderman Condon, please.
We have one public hearing in Finance. I hereby open the public hearing. Public hearing on the fiscal year 2022, proposed maximum property tax levy. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. Is a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? And that will close the public hearing.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. So the next area is petition communications. I just want to reiterate, the winter storm warning that already has been issued for tomorrow. And if there's a snow emergency issued, please, please, help us out and help our drivers out by getting your cars off the snow routes. So, anyone else have anything? Let's see, I'm pausing. Alderman Jobchin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, a reminder, Tuesday, February 9th, at 6:30, I will be conducting six-word meeting, doing this all virtually. The link will be sent out through the usual social media platforms as well as I will be sending that to those in the six-word distribution list. And then hopefully, this weather isn't too bad. I'm scheduled to receive my second dose of the COVID vaccine tomorrow, or Friday evening, so, fingers crossed.
It'd just be cold. Yes, I got my first one yesterday, so cool. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, Davenport lost the true civic leader and humanitarian. Central LaMilla Bend passed away. You know, she was responsible for feeding hundreds of thousands of meals to the poor people in our downtown area. We're so fortunate, Davenport's so fortunate to have someone like her. And as far as Public Works goes, you know, I want to thank Nicole, our Public Works Director, you know. Her staff has been incredibly responsive when, after the initial push, when people call up and ask for, or have some issues, whether it's snowplows or sidewalks being covered. Her crew does an incredible job at follow-up. And, you know, we're fortunate there. You know, this has been very difficult. And out of all those calls she's had, probably a lot of them came from the fourth ward. So Nicole, keep up the good work.
Thank you. Alderman Peacock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I greatly appreciate this opportunity. First and foremost, I don't know if you can, or maybe Cory, can you tell us what's the status of the RSL Task Force?
I'll take it, and then if you want to. So we had another meeting Monday. It was, I would say this was probably our last meeting. We anticipate very soon having a joint school board, city council discussion to brief everyone shortly. This month, I committed to kind of doing it, getting it to you all in February. So we anticipate that. We had a wonderful final discussion about that. The MOU draft is done, the addendum is done, the survey is done, all those things. And so we're ready to get that, and I don't know if Ms. Spiegel wants to add. No. So does that help you? Is that good?
You should see a calendar invite very soon. Yep. Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part. I can hear you now, yes, sir. Yes, we can hear you now.
My second question, well, statement, I want to thank my members of the city council during the municipal update. I greatly appreciate those colleagues who truly understand where we are as a city when it comes to helping out the people of Davenport. I guess yesterday, my frustration was at an all-time high when people call themselves leaders of this great city. And sometimes we, as humans, we neglect to do the right thing. I pray, as I pray every night, that the members of the council, members of staff do the right thing to come to the Civil Rights Commission. I applaud the mayor's leadership, trying to shepherd this thing through. And I hope that those members on the city council understand where we are as a city, trying to get this thing passed. I just hope that maybe next week, individuals will allow the faculty to speak for themselves, allow a subject matter expert to come and talk to the city council. And hopefully, we can come to some resolution and get this budget process on the right road. And I greatly appreciate it. That's all I have. I think I misspoke. I meant to say SRO. My apologies. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Let's see, Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much. I also am having my eighth ward public meeting. Clay Merritt from Public Works will be talking about the capital improvement program for 2021 and 2022. I'm sure there'll be lots of questions. This will be a week from tomorrow on February 11th at 6:30. It will be entirely virtual. It will get pushed out, both using the city processes as well as my eighth ward list. So I really encourage everyone to attend. Thank you very much, and thank you, Clay, for speaking.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, Nicole, a public shout-out. Thank you so much for the city's assistance. There is a, hopefully still, a U.S. Department of Agriculture food drop-off and pickup, or food pickup on Friday. And it was, it was kind of forced off location it was. And so it's kind of on Third and Taylor. And there was quite a bit of ice and snow, and Public Works got on it. And the person who had reached out to me was ecstatic with the job and was very grateful, and thank you for that. It is, just to let you know, this is pickup is Friday. I think it starts about noon for the public, if, again, where the weather's not terrible. But it is a U.S. Department of Agriculture food drop-off. It's the seven food groups. You drive up, you tell them how many boxes you need. They drop them in your trunk, so it's a touchless thing. And it'll be going on, I guess, every week. So it was going on in the fall, in the summer and fall, and then put on hold, and now it's back. So if you know anybody who needs that help, that is going on. And they may be moving, hopefully, to an off-street location, sort of trying to work with them. And I think Alderman Dunn has stepped in today and helped with that as well. So in any case, that's happening on Fridays. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Condon.
I wanted to remind everybody that these snow emergencies can be challenging for, in particular, the downtown businesses that are on the snow routes. And the city does a great job of making the parking garages free during the snow emergencies. So I know that's a little bit more challenging and maybe a little more chilly to walk from the parking garage to the restaurant. But as the Quad Cityans, or Quad Citizens, have been great supporting local businesses through the whole pandemic, I hope they continue to support them in the wintertime. So just be chivalrous and charming and take your date's arm and just walk a couple blocks to the restaurant. It's part of the charm of having dinner downtown.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Nicely said. And I just, anybody else? Okay, I just want to let everybody know, if you don't get the city alerts on your phone, I literally just got mine saying there's a snow emergency, in effect, 8:00 a.m. Thursday, February 4th through 8:00 a.m. Friday, February 5th, and a website. So I'd encourage everyone who's watching to make sure you get it because this is, this is how I get it, too. So this is a way to be informed. Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. We'll move on then. Okay, items for discussion. We have four areas: community development, public safety, Public Works, and Finance. So the first area for discussion is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will lead. Alderwoman Lee, tonight. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. And because I don't think Alderman Gripp and Alderman Dunn has enough to do, I asked him also to set the agenda for me. So we have two items on the agenda. The first one is first consideration, ordinance for case REZ 20-28-08, being the request of MCC Iowa LLC on behalf of MM Development LLC to rezone 5,000 Grand Avenue from our MF multifamily residential district to I-1 Light Industrial District to allow for construction of a communications building to house and operate electronics and fiber optic cables. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, this item will move on. The second item is resolution authorizing the conveyance of the vacated public right-of-way, known as an east-west alley lying south of the 1,900 block of West 15th Street between Wilkes Avenue and Pacific Street. Anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel?
Nope.
Seeing none, this item will move on. Alderman Dunn, will you please set the agenda?
I make a motion to place both items on consent, please.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Okay. Thank you very much, and that concludes community development.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. The next area is public safety. Alderman Ambrose and Alderman Jobchin will discuss this. Alderman Ambrose, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item on the discussion is first consideration ordinance amending chapter 12.72 entitled Conduct in Our Parks to add a section 12.72.095 that prohibits the use of tobacco and nicotine products in the parks and parks facilities.
Anybody from the public?
Thank you. How do you do? My name's Kim Mills. I'm the community tobacco consultant for the Scott County Health Department. My position is funded under the Iowa Department of Public Health Community Tobacco Control and Prevention Grant. One of the initiatives of my position is to work with cities to create tobacco-free, nicotine-free parks. The reason for this initiative is because parks are established to promote healthy activities. Advocacy of tobacco-free and nicotine-free policies in our parks and open spaces is a logical next step in the stewardship of community health and well-being. Secondhand smoke harms everyone. And even if it's in outdoor spaces, it can be dangerous. Cigarette litter can be toxic to children and animals. Tobacco-free policies help change community norms. Young people see people smoking. They deem that as an acceptable behavior. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to change the next generation. When a young person uses tobacco or nicotine, it can change the brain. The brain is developing up until the age of 25 years old. So if we can deter young people from starting, I think that's a positive thing. Policies provide consistency among community groups and facilities. And in the time of COVID, this respiratory illness, tobacco-free and nicotine-free parks make sense. There's 113 municipalities across the state of Iowa who have gone ahead and made either an ordinance or a resolution. Some have created it in many parks. I have more information I can provide if you're interested. I'm here to answer any questions. Through the Iowa Department of Public Health, I can get free signage. They will provide all the signs that we would need. And the premise behind signage is that it helps to enforce it. Typically, community members want to do what's right. If they see a tobacco-free, nicotine-free sign, the majority of people are going to abide by that. I guess I'm here if you have any questions, if you have any...
Thanks.
...else I can address. Another thing I can do with my position is I can support people who want to quit tobacco and nicotine. So we have free resources through the Iowa Department of Public Health. Anybody who wants to quit can contact my office, and I can hook them up with some free resources.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Would you like this information, or...
If you have some, you can just give it to Mr. Crupp, and he'll make sure we get it.
Anybody from the council?
Doorman.
Alderman Doorman.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Yeah, when I first, when we all received the email from Kim, and she first asked that the city looks about going down this road, it kind of blew my mind that we aren't already there. It's one of those things where I think we all maybe just did assume that parks were already tobacco-free since I remember it was in high school for me when the rules that you couldn't smoke in bars was enacted. And so I think this is a great thing to do and one that is impactful. And there, I've heard of a study about MTV and their impact on youth tobacco use. And they use their platform to run "Smoking is Not Cool" campaigns. And that saw a drastic reduction in youth tobacco use because of the peer pressures associated with the smoking not being cool and wanting to fit in. And I think that goes exactly what Kim was saying about smoking and tobacco use in the park, that we would hate to see our children see us being role models that we sometimes forget that we are and copy some of our bad behaviors. So I'm glad we're finally passing this, and I'm looking forward to smoke-free parks.
Alderman Lee.
Just a quick question for Tom. This covers vaping as well, doesn't it?
That's correct. It covers nicotine products as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, the second item is resolution authorizing the conveyance, or the first consideration ordinance amending schedule 11 of chapter 10.96 entitled Resident Parking Only by adding Sturtevant Street along the west side from Alley North at 12th Street to 13th Street.
Anybody in the council? Alderman. The next item is beer and liquor licenses. We don't go through those, but if you're curious, you can find them on our social media platform. Alderman Jobchin, please set the agenda.
I move to place all items on the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Third area is Public Works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Doorman will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have 17 items this evening. Item number one is the second consideration of an ordinance amending chapter 15.44 entitled Flood Damage Prevention in the Davenport Municipal Code to adopt a new flood insurance study and flood maps and align the ordinance with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Harrison Street reconstruction, Northwood Drive to 503 Harrison Street project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the plans, specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West 43rd Street reconstruction, Michigan Avenue to Elsie project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Sheffield Drive reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Heatherton Drive reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the East 38th Street reconstruction, Spring Street to Bell Avenue. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution approving the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the West 53rd Street patching project. estimated cost for the West 53rd Street patching project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Water Pollution Control Plant Gray Water Conversion Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution approving the purchase of a John Deere 744L in loader to the, for the compost facility from the Martin Equipment of Rock Island, Illinois, in the amount of $361,160. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Alderman Dorman?
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. I just want to mention again that I do work for John Deere, and therefore I will be abstaining from this item next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Norman. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution adopting Iowa statewide urban design standards for public improvements, Iowa statewide urban standard specifications for public improvements, and the City of Davenport supplemental specifications manual. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on, and I'll read these final items and then ask for comment. Item number 11 is a resolution assessing the cost of boarding up buildings at various lots, tracts of real estate. Item number 12 is a resolution assessing the cost of brush and debris removal at various lots, tracts of real estate. Item number 13 is a resolution addressing the cost of condemned property demolition at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number 14 is a resolution assessing the cost of sidewalk repair at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number 15 is a resolution assessing the cost of snow removal from sidewalks at various lots and tracts of real estate. Item number 16 is a resolution assessing the cost of tree removal at various lots, tracts in real estate. And finally, item number 17 is a resolution assessing the cost of weed cutting at various lots and tracts of real estate. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address any of them items? Counsel? Seeing none, Alderman Dorman, would you set the agenda, please?
I move to place all items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? And that concludes public works for this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. The next and last item is finance. Alderman Condon and Alderman Peacock, let's discuss these areas. Alderman Condon, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have four items on finance. The first item is the first consideration ordinance providing for the sale and issuance of not to exceed $10,500,000 general obligation refunding bonds Series 2021A, and for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? That item will move on. Staff will be, I apologize, I didn't read this earlier, but staff will be recommending the suspension of the rules and the passage of second and third considerations. Item number two is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2022 maximum property tax dollars. Is there anyone wishing to address this item from the public? Counsel? That item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the purchase of a mobile precinct unit from LDV Inc. of Burlington, Wisconsin, in the amount of $258,545. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address that item? Counsel? And our final item is a resolution opposing Senate File 159, the proposed omnibus educational bill, which includes the creation of a private school voucher program and the elimination of voluntary diversity plans in Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Alderman Ambrose?
I'm part of the public.
Well, yeah, no one from the public recognizes Alderman Ambrose.
Yeah, I've been an advocate of the voucher program for a long time, and I know thousands, several thousand people in our great city that have advocated this along with me. You know, the, I think all parents want their children to go to school in a safe, wholesome environment, and, you know, this allows some different options for parents that believe their schools are not teaching the kids what they believe should be taught. Some people call it social engineering, but if you want an idea of the impact of chartered schools, there's a documentary called Waiting for Superman, and I would encourage everybody on the council between now and next week to Google that and take a look at the impact chartered schools have had in some of our core communities. So I'm happy for it. I support the voucher program and this. So we're fortunate. Not a lot of times I agree with what goes on in Des Moines and with the governor, but, you know, I can get behind this very easily. I...
Alderwoman McGinnis?
Thank you, and, uh, thank you, Alderman Condon. I'd like to speak in support of this resolution. I'm very concerned at the, there, there have been some projections of what this will do to our, our public school system, and, and I'm very concerned that it will hurt Davenport. You know, my husband and I don't have any children. We have always supported public schools in the communities we've lived in. I'm a product of public school education in North Carolina from first grade to, through college. My father was a product of Iowa public schools, from a little country schoolhouse outside Kewcock through the University of Iowa. And, and public education in Iowa has a long history of excellence. I fear that this will begin to erode that even more than some other things have, have eroded in the past. I would like my dollars and a considerable amount of our property taxes go to our public schools, and, and that's great, and I support that, but I would like those dollars to go to my community, to back into the schools and the community that I serve, the community that I live in. I think this is a dangerous, slippery slope indeed, and I, and I certainly support this resolution, and I would hope others would join me. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderwoman Dickman?
Thank you. So many of you know that one of my children has special needs, and she could be, if I, all my, my only option were this voucher program, which is potentially what could happen if we underfund our public schools too, too much, or she would have to go to school somewhere very far to reach a public school. They, a, a private school could exclude her with no legal ramifications, and so that's really terrifying as a parent. And so I would similarly encourage people to see what the impact of charter schools are on the community, because if you are looking at actual research, actually evidence-based things on outcomes for children, especially children that have not had the deck stacked for them, it's, it's not good. So I will similarly be very vocally supporting this resolution. I think that every parent, every community member should be reaching out to their legislators and reminding them that this is very harmful to parents of the kids who need the very most help. And so I guess I'll just leave it at that, that I am honestly ashamed of my state right now for knowing what the data on charter schools does to the community and trying to plow forward with it anyway. Thank you.
Alderman Dorman?
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Just like Alderwoman McGinnis, I'm also a product of public education, and also part of my time was in North Carolina, where I did Middlesbrough High School as well. And I find the North Carolina education funding system or school district system to be very unique and interesting that Wake County, which is where Raleigh is, is the county that Raleigh and their surrounding suburbs are in, it's actually one giant school district. And so for, I lived in South Wake County, and for me to get to North Wake County, it would be an hour with traffic in order to get there. And so on days that we had a snowstorm, it was maybe snowing in North Wake County and not in South Wake County, and I got a snow day even though there was no snow around. So that was a perk of it. Another perk of it, though, was that those tax dollars were then shared amongst all of those communities within the entire county, and, and there was not one school district area that had the nicer, better school and one that maybe had a worse school because of monetary constraints. And that is something that I see here within, within Davenport that I would hate to see grow deeper and have a, a larger divide within Scott County, that we already, Davenport Schools is, has their issues that they're working through, that one of the major ones is funding and money and having that support. And us as a city of Davenport, we need Davenport schools to be strong and growing and successful in order for us to be successful. And so to think that we would hinder them potentially even more by having the voucher program where people would then be able to choose to have their, their dollars go elsewhere, it's one that is frightening and alarming, and I stand with Davenport School District, and I, I will be voting for this resolution.
Alderman Jogen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Personally, I'd, I have some favor for this, for this legislation. You know, my, my children have gone through private school, and there's some things that could benefit me personally if this were to pass. However, I am very supportive of the Davenport public school system, and, you know, like many of us, I believe that our, our city will be strong when we have a strong public school system. And, you know, I think there are some items within this legislation that could be detrimental. You know, this resolution that we're going to be voting on next week is really just to give our backing, right? We, you know, from my understanding, we, we have no determining factor whether this, this goes through Des Moines or not. So, you know, just as we have other items on our legislative agenda, we'd just be essentially adding this to our legislative agendas, you know, supporting or, you know, saying that, hey, we're not in favor as a city. So therefore, while I personally would like to see some of these items come through from a legislative standpoint, you know, as a member of the council next week, you know, I will be actually in favor of this resolution so that we as a city can have a unified front that says, we believe this is best for our city and our school district.
Alderman Peacock?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As I've mentioned or said in the municipal update about this particular resolution to show solidarity with our great legislators, I would like to make the following comment. This bill would possibly finance a cycle that could lead to segregation of Davenport schools, allowing wealthy families to flee public schools for less diverse charter or private schools, and reducing funds for poor minority students. This was a taking, this, this, as I were, this was, this was taking Davenport backwards and away from hopes and intention expressed by my colleague, Ray Ambrose. As we always say, this is a great city, and I would say maybe for some, if we allow this legislation to go through. I made the comments before, I'm gonna make them again. Thank you so very much.
Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. First of all, I feel very strongly that public tax money should go to public schools. One of the things that makes this country really great, and in some cases, unique, and that we do have a very robust public school system. I'm very involved with the Vietnamese community here, and for those folks that grew up in Vietnam, they really appreciate the system here because they cannot go to school unless they pay for it, and many of the people there were too poor to actually attend school. So I really think people should appreciate what we have for public schools here and how important it is for our communities, for our families, and especially for our children. I also want to recognize that private schools are not only charter schools, but many of them are also religious schools. And again, I feel very strongly about the separation of church and state, and public tax money should go only to public schools. So I am going to support this resolution. Thank you. And I am also, I am, my daughter, my entire family came through the public school system, and I even attended the state colleges and made all the difference for me. I did not grow up in a wealthy family, and that public school system is what supported me all the way through my life to this point. So I support the public schools. Thank you.
I'll add something quickly, and then I'll let the mayor have the last word. As city council people, Alderman, our mandate is to run the city, and we don't often get to wade into politics as you typically hear them written in the paper or, or argued, and that's actually kind of a helpful thing because we don't have to wade into so many hot-button issues. We also don't always get the opportunity, though we may wish we could, to touch on the socioeconomic problems of the world. But the reason why we touch on this now is because this specifically would be terrifically bad for Davenport. I echo the sentiments of most of my colleagues, and I just want to emphasize that this'll change the playing field for generations to come. So it, it's of great importance that we don't, we don't allow for this. And now I'll recognize the mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. So I have, as we do during COVID, if there's people that provide emails through my email, city email, particular to an agenda item, I read those, so I have four, so I'll ask for that allowance, and then I'll give my comments. So, please, so I think everybody got them, but I'm reading them into the record. So, dear honorable city council members, I'm writing you tonight to let you know my thoughts on the recent public school voucher bill and the Iowa legislature and ask your support, any resolution to oppose it. The bill is detriment, is a detriment to our public school system, will only serve to take money away from students who need it. Not only will it severely hurt our children, but it could also have devastating impacts on jobs. There are far less private schools in the state. To absorb any teacher and staff may lose their jobs at public schools due to funds being diverted because of this law. These fears have grown exponentially after hearing about the potential impacts to my rural school in southeast Iowa. I would like to help support students in my hometown and here in Davenport by reaching out to all of you tonight. For me, this is also an issue of church and state, as it seems most private schools are religious, religion-specific and focused. Families and students alike have the freedom of religion, and giving private schools public education money would severely undermine this right. I've been lucky that my childhood church was accepting and progressive, but many are not. I have seen many friends whose parents have sent them to public schools treated differently because of who they were. These private schools have went on as far as not allowing certain scholarships to be acknowledged during graduation ceremonies. In this way, giving public money to private schools is not only reckless but encouraging discrimination. I hope you all stay well during the global pandemic. Thank you for taking the time to read through my thoughts on this bill. I hope you're able to pass some of these worries along to our legislators. Thank you and stay safe. Christopher Crebill. Next one. Dear city council members, as a former school board director for the Davenport Community School District, I cannot tell you how devastating it will be for the Davenport Community School District, our students, and the city of Davenport. It will be if SF 159 passes. I support the resolution in opposition to Iowa SF 159 for the sake of our public schools and the Davenport community. Travis Fisher King of Davenport. The next one. Please support the resolution in opposition to Iowa SF 159. Public funds are for public schools, not private schools. Any funds taken away from failing schools should instead be used to improve those schools and invest in our children's education and teachers. Respectfully, Mark Kane, Davenport. And last one. Dear council members, as a resident of Davenport, I am writing to you to support the proposed resolution that calls on the legislature not to pass SF 159, the school voucher bill. We in Davenport are particularly vulnerable to these kinds of diversions of taxpayer funds from our already underfunded public schools, but even if we were not, the diversion of such funds into unaccountable private schools that do not have to accommodate a special education and other diverse groups of students would be public policy that the city, the city should oppose. Please pass the resolution against SF 159. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Philip Sturtevant. And now I'll add some of mine. So I'm the, so to be clear and full disclosure, I'm the one that asked to put this on the agenda. Full disclosure, I teach at Davenport Central and have done so for 18 years. I am a product of the Catholic schools here in Davenport. My wife is a product of the Catholic schools in Dubuque. My children are the product of the Catholic schools here in Davenport, and we believe in Catholic schools. But public money, ladies and gentlemen, is for public schools. Iowa used to lead the nation in education, and everybody was proud of that. I brought a couple items here just... I brought a couple items here just to draw attention. So one is the Iowa state flag that I've carried with me for many years since I joined the Army, and people in the military aren't gonna, are gonna understand what I'm talking about. When you go and you deploy and you go somewhere, it's very common that you take the state flag with you to recognize this. You put it up in your tent, you put it, I put it in my rucksack. This specific flag has jumped into many countries, Honduras and the Middle East, and all kinds of places all over the world. The flag is the state of Iowa, and when we put these flags up, my respective colleagues in the military, we'd all give each other a hard time where we're from, and usually I would get Iowa. Oh, is that the potato state? Is that the Buckeye State? And I, and no, that's the education state. Everybody understood that Iowa led the nation in education and public education, and the ability of our educators, our teachers, to produce the best students in the nation was known by everyone. And I just want to know that that is what I still believe our flag represents, our state flag, the education, but I believe if this bill goes through, we might be chipping away at what this flag means. And then I'll get to my other visual aid as a teacher here in a moment. All right, so a couple points. If Division One of SF one fifty-nine goes through, or if it's fully implemented, the cost would be approximately fifty-four million dollars. The per pupil funding amount that the state is talking about, each voucher is approximately five thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. Times that, times ten thousand one hundred and eighty-five, which is about how many people would participate in the budget, that's fifty-three million dollars. Okay, Division Two is written, greatly expands charter schools. Ladies and gentlemen, there are two charter schools in Iowa. There used to be three, there was one in Cedar Rapids, it failed. If you look at any of the studies that are done, especially Stanford and their educational studies, charter schools are successful for a few years, and then they are not sustainable and can't keep up, and they can choose who to accept and not accept. Okay? So the expansion itself will not likely increase expense for the charter schools, but the pupils who attend will be counted against financial purposes. Division Three, elimination of voluntary diversity plans, some of my colleagues talked about that. That will be detrimental to Davenport and especially our urban folks. Iowa, again, used to be a leader in public education. We still can be, we still should be, but this bill will hurt us. Again, only two. Davenport Community Schools is our third largest employer. We always talk about supporting our employers, our largest employers, our smallest employers. There are approximately fourteen thousand students plus in the Davenport community system, almost three thousand employees in the Davenport community system, and we want them to stay and be successful. If this bill goes through, that could be a detriment to that. Our public school teachers are the example of who we need to teach our children. We need to fund education, period. So I see our students and our teachers doing amazing things every day. I've heard legislatures and people talk that some schools are failing. What I see is our schools excelling. I see our teachers and our students every day at Davenport Central, where I work and where I travel around, at least in this place, doing great work. I'm in ROTC, so I go to schools in Des Moines, Waterloo, and Atomo, and we come together, and the schools are awesome. Let's keep funding our public schools. We barely keep up with inflation now, and we're gonna take fifty-four million dollars away and give it to something else? Again, I, I just, I don't understand it. There's approximately four hundred and fifty thousand public school people, students, in Iowa compared to about thirty thousand private school kids, but the ratio of funding is completely opposite, fifty-four million to twenty-four million. Okay? That ratio should be switched, at least, if we're gonna consider that. We need to focus on jobs and improving the Iowa economy, not these divisive issues. I asked Iowa Legislature and my colleagues to adjust their compass and stay focused. I have the compass up here because I carry it in my truck. It's a thing in the Army we used to do, make sure we stay focused and on our ASMT and know what we're doing. We need to stay focused, we need to stay on our ASMT, and we need to fund our public schools, and this bill does not do that, and it could be a detriment to our system here in Davenport, so I ask my colleagues to please support this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Condon, for allowing me to read the emails and to comment.
Thank you, Your Honor. Below on your agenda, we have items that are purchases from ten thousand to fifty thousand. We don't read each of those out loud, but they are listed there for your information. Alderman Peacock, would you please set the agenda?
I have a quick question, Mr. Chair, because the staff wants to recommend suspending. Do we put all items on the consent agenda, or do I put that first one on a held discussion open?
If I could, Mr. Chair, what I would recommend, Alderman Peacock, is that you move to place item one on discussion with the recommendation to suspend the rules and all other items on consent.
Thank you, Tom. Mr. Chair, I move to place item one on discussion with the recommendation, with approval, staff recommendation to suspend with the suspension of the rules and passage of the passage of second and third consideration, and I move that two and three to place on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry?
Aye.
I apologize.
Alderman Peacock, just to be clear, you meant items two, three, and four on discussion, or on consent? Okay.
All right, we're on track. And there is a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And that concludes Finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Alderman Condon. Is there any other ordinance, resolution, or motion? There are none tonight. Is there any public with business other than what's been on the agenda? Hearing, Mr. Crokin? Okay.
Ken Crokin, I live in the sixth ward. I'm also a Scott County supervisor. I think probably all of you, like I, have received any number of phone calls from residents unhappy with the slow rollout of COVID nineteen vaccinations. On January twenty-first, the Biden administration issued a directive to FEMA to create one hundred mass vaccination sites in the next thirty days across the country. I spoke to a representative of FEMA Region Seven in Kansas City, wondering how we might ensure that the Quad Cities was chosen as such a site. I even included an offer of making our baseball stadium available at no, no expense to them for this purpose. I was told that a request for such a designation of the Quad Cities as a mass vaccination site would have to originate as a request from the Iowa Department of Public Health, specifically its interim director, Kelly Garcia. I have reached out to IDPH, the Iowa Department of Public Health, requesting that they solicit FEMA for the creation of such a site here in the Quad Cities. Tomorrow night, the Scott County Board of Supervisors will sign a letter requesting that in writing, and although it's somewhat unusual, I would like to urge this board to do the same. Reach out to the Iowa, Iowa Department of Public Health Director, Kelly Garcia, and encourage her to solicit the establishment of a FEMA mass evacuation site in the Quad Cities. What's the advantage? Well, FEMA comes with its own medical staff, its own supplies, and it can augment the already outstanding work being done in this area by our healthcare systems and the Scott County Public Health Department, but having more access, particularly in the City of Davenport, where it will be more accessible to those who rely on public transportation and other such issues. So I would just ask you to consider that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing, seeing no one? Pausing for anybody? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, very good. We're adjourned. Be safe tomorrow.